Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 2, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. All right. First on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adopt the agenda. Second?
Motion by Carlson and a second by Novak. Is there any corrections or discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And the items, the first three items are all proclamations or presentations with the first one, oath of office for new police officers, Chief Bill Steiner. It says for new police officers. I think it's actually for promotions tonight, isn't it? New police officers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity to introduce our four newest Coon Rapids Police Officers to the council, to the community tonight. All four of these officers have been put to the test and completed the Coon Rapids Police Department's field training program and thus have earned the right to stand here before you tonight to receive their uniquely numbered Coon Rapids Police Officer badges. Although they all came to us with some level of law enforcement experience or related experience, we have now put them to the test and kind of taught them our way to do things, the Coon Rapids way, which embodies our core values of trust, professionalism, professionalism and compassion. And I'm proud to say that they do meet this. And to our newest officers here, this organization is very proud to have each of you onboard. You're about to receive badges 197, 198, 200 and 202. They're unique to you guys. Nobody's ever worn them before and nobody will wear them again. We don't recycle badges at the Coon Rapids Police Department, so that'll always be your number. It's important that you remember that these badges are entrusted to you by the citizens of Coon Rapids. And to wear them, we ask that you always honor the commitment that we're asking from you, which is to do things our way, the Coon Rapids way, and to always support our mission statement, which is to build, to support a safe community while building trust through engagement, professionalism and compassion. This also symbolizes a commitment that we make to you and to your families, that we're going to provide you with the training, equipment and structure to help you have a successful career here at the Coon Rapids Police Department. We define having a successful career by having a long, safe and rewarding career here. And that's what we hope for each of one, each one of you as you stand here and take your oath of office today. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our police officers, our new police officers, one by one, in order of their seniority. Our first officer is Jake Hilden. He'll be getting badge 197 tonight. Jake was born here in Coon Rapids and lived here as a young child. He grew up in East Bethel and went to St. Francis High School. He has a bachelor's degree in business administration from Metro State University and he earned his law enforcement degree at North Hennepin Community College before attending skills at Hennepin Tech. Jake has been a sheriff's office reserve here in Anoka. And in 2012, he was hired as a CSO for the Columbia Heights Police Department. In 2013, he was promoted to a police officer position at the Columbia Heights Police Department where he had a lot of experiences, including as an FTO, a mentor. He was in the street crimes unit on the mobile field force and did some time in investigations as well. In 2021, Jake left law enforcement to pursue his dream of living in Hawaii. And he must have missed the climate because he returned here. And it's sort of important to note here that I think two of his former, former coworkers at Columbia Heights Police Department now work here. I like to think they had something to do with luring him over here. In a little while, Jake's wife Sam will come up and pin badge 197 on him. Next, Officer Tara Brunmeyer. She will be receiving badge 198. Tara lived in Coon Rapids from 2002 to 2011, went to Coon Rapids High School, and then in 2019, got her associate's degree in law enforcement from Normandale Community College. She attended Hennepin Tech Skills and in 2019, she became a community service officer for the city of Robinsdale. And then in 20, later in 2019, was promoted to the police officer position. She's our second recent hire from Robinsdale. If you remember, we just pinned Officer Tomzick's badge on him not too long ago. And it makes us very happy when we, we see that our current officers are recruiting for us. And we're glad that she made it to the right side of the river. In a little while, Tara's daughter McKenna will be coming up to pin badge 198 on her with potential assist from Mother Michelle. Is that right? After, after Tara will be Julie Shimmets are, she'll be receiving badge number 200. Julie grew up in Andover and went to Anoka High School. She got her bachelor's of arts degree from Hamlin University in criminology and criminal justice and then attended Hennepin Tech for skills. Julie's past employment was as a lifeguard with the YMCA in our own bunker beach. She was a Coon Rapids Police Department Explorer, Coon Rapids Police Department Reserve Officer. We hired her as a CSO in 2021. And now she's being promoted to police officer, or she has been promoted to police officer. Julie said she wanted to be a police officer since she was a little girl. And here at the Coon Rapids Police Department, we literally feel like we've watched her grow up. I don't know, I'm going to guess 14 or 15 years old as a explorer here. So we always like to keep our homegrown talent here and we're very happy that Julie's here. Last but not least, Dave Genovese will be getting badge number 202 pinned on him. Dave grew up in Eagan and went to Eagan High School. He attended Inver Hills Community College. In 2020, 2023, earned his associate's degree in law enforcement. He went to Hennepin Tech for skills. Dave's worked a variety of jobs but spent the last six years or so with the Mall of America Security, where he was promoted to sergeant and received several awards. Dave's wife Lauren will be here to pin his badge on him tonight. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think we're ready to turn it over to you and...
We had to do an audible.
We had to do an audible? You're supposed to give me the sign, you know, draw it out a little bit.
Just fine. The city clerk was right on top of it.
All right. So if you're ready, Mr. Mayor, we'll have Jake Hilden and his wife Sam come up.
All right. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Jacob Hilden do solemnly swear.
I Jacob Hilden do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Next, we'll ask Officer Tara Brunmeyer and daughter McKenna and Mother Michelle to come up.
All right. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. And it's Brunmeyer? I Tara Brunmeyer do solemnly swear.
I Tara Brunmeyer do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
All right. Next, we'll have Julie Shimmets and her grandpa Bernie. Come on.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Julie Shimmets do solemnly swear.
I Julie Shimmets do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
And last but not least, Dave Genovese and his wife Lauren.
All right. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I David Genovese do solemnly swear.
I David Genovese do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
All right. Well, first, thank you to everybody that came out to support our newest officers. I know it means a lot to them. We always love to see it. Thank you for the badge pinners who left nobody bleeding tonight, which is a good thing. And the joke never gets old, but you are all welcome to stay for the entire city council meeting if you would like. I'm told it's going to be a long one.
Why is that a joke? They're welcome to stay.
I meant it with sincerely. Otherwise, thank you guys all for coming and you're welcome to head out to the hall for pictures and whatnot. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome aboard.
We're hanging out with you, Mr. Mayor.
I've never heard of Ben and his people and they're all going to be surgeons there?
Whoa!
Three years at least.
All right. I think we're almost settled again, so we'll move on with the meeting. Our second item is a Fair Housing Month proclamation. April is Fair Housing Month to commemorate the Fair Housing Act, which is, which was enacted as part of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. And the Fair Housing Act outlaws discrimination housing on the basis of race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status and disability. During the last five-plus decades, the Fair Housing Act has facilitated equal opportunities in housing to the residents of the city of Coon Rapids. So let me go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas, the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas, Coon Rapids is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas, our social fabric, the economy, health and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas, the success of the Fair Housing Act comes from a commitment by all of us to address discrimination and support equal housing opportunities for all. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 to be Fair Housing Month in the city of Coon Rapids, proclaimed the second day of April 2024. I don't think we've got anybody here from Spar to receive that, right? All right. And yet another proclamation. It is our Earth Month proclamation and awards. The Coon Rapids Sustainability Commission has been working on expanding Earth Month programming in the city. Earth Day is on April 22, 2024, and the month of April has long been celebrated as Earth Month. Observing Earth Month prevents and prevents, presents an opportunity to educate the community on the importance of sustainability and celebrate the city's ongoing commitment to creating a resilient, sustainable and equitable community. I'm pretty sure that a lot of this is going to be covered in the proclamation. I'll just go ahead and read that. Proclamation for Earth Month. Whereas, the city of Coon Rapids recognizes the vital importance of environmental stewardship and sustainability in safeguarding our planet for current and future generations. And whereas, the Coon Rapids Sustainability Commission has been working to educate the public on the importance of sustainability since the commission's inception in 2009. And whereas, the month of April has long been celebrated as Earth Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about environmental issues, promoting conservation efforts and inspiring action to protect our planet. And whereas, the city of Coon Rapids is committed to fostering a culture of environmental responsibility among its residents, businesses and organizations, and to supporting initiatives that promote sustainability and protect natural resources. And whereas, the observance of Earth Month presents an opportunity for our community to come together to take meaningful action to address environmental challenges such as pollution, habitat loss and resource depletion. And whereas, by acknowledging and celebrating Earth Month, we reaffirm our dedication to building a more resilient, sustainable and equitable future for all. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 to be Earth Month in the city of Coon Rapids, proclaimed the second day of April 2024. Now, we have a few awards to go with this. Does somebody from Sustainability want to announce these? Or do you want me to announce these from here? I'm going to take the lack of that direction as...
Olivia's here.
Olivia, did you want to come up and do this? All right. Okay, all right. In recognition of the sustainability work that residents, businesses and institutions have been doing in Coon Rapids, the Sustainability Commission voted to present the following groups with Earth Month Sustainability Awards. And the first award will go to, the Anoka Conservation District and participating residents for their lawns to LeJoom's demonstration neighborhood. Where's, we had a demonstration neighborhood. That was cool. So should I meet you out front with this? Or do you want to? All right, okay. Right up front, right center here. So that's, that's all the information I have. Earth Month Sustainability Award for their lawns to LeJoom's demonstration neighborhood. And I know, I know somebody's going to be able to tell us more about that, right? A little bit? Introduce yourself and then...
Yeah, my name's Carrie Taylor. I'm a restoration ecologist with Anoka Conservation District. And I've been working with Olivia and many residents who weren't able to make it today, but Jackie, who lives along the Mississippi River and has done pollinator plantings along her shoreline and all over her yard. And we are working to build pollinator and habitat corridors throughout, throughout the city.
Awesome. And if, and if they're interested in that, they should connect with our sustainability person or you?
Exactly. Yeah. So connect with Olivia or with Anoka Conservation District. And we'll continue to add native plants to city parks and add, help residents add native plants to their yards. So, yes, perfect. All right.
Thank you very much. Oh, well. Oh, well. Okay, I'll move over. I'll bet this was Daphne's award here. There we go. I'm embarrassed to say, here's one I'm a lot more familiar with. The Coon Rapids Sustainability Commission awards Alloy Brewing with an Earth Month Sustainability Award for their solar installation. Thank you for advancing sustainability in Coon Rapids. And I'll meet you out front. I'm assuming somebody's heard from Alloy? Well, I guess I could drop it off on the way home tonight. And then our third award is to the Anoka Hennepin School District for their solar installation at Adams Elementary and Hoover Elementary. Do we have somebody here from the school district? All right. If you would introduce yourself and...
Sure. My name is Greg Kow. I'm the chief operations officer for the Anoka Hennepin School District. And thank you for having me here tonight on behalf of the district. We were able to, through a grant opportunity and partnership with Ideal Energy, we were able to outfit two of our 25 elementary schools with solar panels. And those schools happen to be in Coon Rapids. So we're very excited to see what that brings.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me give you this. And then I'm pretty sure that we're going to be, there you go. Look at that. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you to these groups and to many others who are helping make Coon Rapids a sustainable place to live. To get more involved with Earth Month, residents can attend the Sustainability Commission's Park Cleanup Day on Saturday, April 27, at 10:00 a.m. at Lyons Coon Creek Park. And now we are looking to adopt the proclamation. Do we actually make a motion on that then? It kind of makes it look like we do, but we normally don't.
Typically, you wouldn't.
Yeah, okay. We'll move along then. So we are up to item four, I think. Yes. Approving the minutes from the March 19 meeting. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Grischoviac?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19, 2024 meeting.
Second? Motion by Grischoviac, second by Novak. Discussion or corrections? I just had one question. Under the public hearing, item five on page two, it says that I opened the public hearing at 7:25 and then I opened the public hearing at 7:26. Was it, was that supposed to be one closed or was it two public hearings?
I think we'll just change that to closed.
So I got. All right. Is there any other discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is approved. One abstention, Rayrower. We're on to item five. Approve a service agreement with, oh, I'm sorry. Now we are on the consent agenda and we have three, four, five items on our consent agenda. The first one is to adopt a service agreement with Alexandra House. Alexandra House is a nonprofit, nonprofit corporation that is Anoka County's only women's shelter. It provides a 24-hour shelter, support services, advocacy, educational opportunities to residents in the city and Anoka County. Alexandra House also works with the police department and the city attorney's office with domestic violent, domestic violence cases. Alexandra House has made a request for financial assistance for the services it provides to the city. And the council did appropriate $15,000, which was a $2,500 increase from 2023 to the Alexandra House in the 2024 budget for these services. This service agreement reduces the party's wishes to writing and the agreement is for one year and can be terminated by either party with 30 days' notice. Should this contract be terminated early, the funds paid shall be returned by Alexandra House in proportion to the number of months the contract was not fulfilled. So we're looking to approve the city to enter into a service agreement with Alexandra House. House to provide shelter, support services, and advocacy to affected city residences, city residents. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item six, is to adopt Resolution 24-47, approving an assessment abatement 23-1 street reconstruction. Apparently, we had a case of mistake in identity. The property located at 13265 Raven Street was incorrectly assessed for Street Reconstruction Project 23-1, and so we are basically, we are removing them. So the staff identified the mistake and informed the property owner by U.S. mail that the assessment would be removed from the Anoka County tax rule. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-47, removing the street reconstruction assessment from PIN number 033124220064 for city project number 23-1. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item seven on this evening's consent agenda, or jumps on the agenda, is to approve the Anoka Hennepin Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. The existing JPA has been in place since March of 2022. The Fridley, the Fridley Police Department has removed itself from the JPA, and thus the advisory board is requesting an updated signature page. Additional changes with respect to insurance and indemnification have been agreed upon by the member agencies, and the language has been updated to reflect those changes. So we're looking for council to approve the 2024 Joint Powers Agreement with the Anoka Hennepin Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force. The next item on our consent agenda, which is item eight on our, on our agenda this evening, is to accept a sidewalk and snow storage easement from C.R. Foley LLC. The agreement is for a 10-foot-wide permanent sidewalk easement across the north portion of 10160 Foley Boulevard. The sidewalk will be located on the south side of 102nd Avenue and connect to existing sidewalks on Foley Boulevard. The city will construct the sidewalk extension as part of Street Reconstruction Project 24-1. The city will be responsible to plow and maintain the new sidewalk, so we're looking to accept the easement for sidewalk and snow storage purposes from C.R. Foley LLC across the north portion of 10160 Foley Boulevard. And then item nine, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to adopt, adopt Resolution 24-48, accepting Community Strength Foundation donation in the amount of $1,065.37. This is to offset costs for the 2024 Winter Concert Series. We are being asked to adopt a resolution formally accepting this donation, which is required per state statute, and the city is grateful to the Community Strength Foundation for their generosity. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-48, accepting the donation of $1,065.37 from the Community Strength Foundation for use in the 2024 Winter Concert Series.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion or questions on the, on the consent agenda?
You're on.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Yeah, I just want to just make a point, since Alexandra House is part of the consent agenda, that this is a vital service to our community, provides round-the-clock service, advocacy, and shelter for all victims of violence. If anyone here or at home that's listening feels unsafe in their relationship or at home, please reach out to them, and they know what to do to help you out and get you services that you need. Thank you. That's all.
Any other discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. We are looking to, to conduct a public hearing for the United States Highway 10 Congestion Mitigation Project. Hello there.
Hi.
You don't look at all like Mark Hanson, so...
Oh.
It said Mark Hanson on you. No, no, you're good. You're, I guess you're good to go. Are you deferring, Mark?
I could introduce this one.
Okay, very good.
So we have staff from Anoka County, MINDOT, and HDR Engineering here with us tonight, and they will be providing a presentation regarding the environmental assessment worksheet that is related to the U.S. Highway 10 Congestion Mitigation Project. They're going to go through a number of details on the project, including schedule, discussions on the noise walls, what the work is involved, as well as the, the schedule, which is planned to take place in 2025. And with that, I will turn it over to Brandy Popenhagen with HDR, who will go through a presentation and then request that the council hold a public hearing to collect any feedback or answer any questions regarding the project.
Thank you. Now you're up.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor Cook and council members. Yep, I am Brandy Popenhagen. I work for HDR Engineering, and my role in the project was to conduct the environmental investigations, studies, and pull them into a document so that we could hold a public hearing like today and a comment period and clear this project for future construction. So again, the goal for tonight is to formally collect public comments on the environmental assessment worksheet. This environmental assessment worksheet has been published. It was published on March 19th, and you can find it on the Anoka County website, which is located, you can see the website address here, as well as a URL, URL code if you want to find it there. Tonight, if possible, if people are here to comment on it, we are more than happy to hear your questions or your verbal comments on this hearing. You also can email any comments you have to Nick Dobda, who is sitting in the audience here, and his email is provided here, as well as his address. The project that we're here to talk about is Highway 10. It is located between Round Lake Boulevard and Creek Meadow Drive. What we're intending to do is to build an additional lane in each direction on this roadway. And the primary reason for doing that is we are trying to address the congestion that we are experiencing on this roadway and that we anticipate into the future, and also relieve local traffic as that congestion begins to, to grow. This started in 2019 when Anoka County completed a study on the highway. They recognized that, that congestion was starting to grow on this road, as well as looking at other projects in the area, and they sort of saw this gap in the, in the, in the network and decided to look at whether or not they needed to make this part of the road also future-proof it for future growth in the area. What they evaluated is that the, as traffic grows out here, as the area grows out here, that traffic does want to be on Highway 10. They looked at local roads in the area, and that as other construction problems, projects happen in this area, that we will anticipate more traffic on this road as well as we grow into the future. We always look 20 years out, and they determined that congestion will be a problem, and their solution to do that, to address that was to add capacity to this highway. Again, the major project need, right now, we're, we're experiencing a little bit of congestion. Again, the study started in 2018. Currently, in, at, in 2018, that the volume of traffic was 80,000 to 99,000 vehicles per day. If we do nothing in 20 years, which is 2040 we looked at, we anticipate that there'll be 99,000 to 111,000 vehicles per day if we do nothing, and expect that congestion to grow quite a bit. Again, like I said, this project started back in 2018, and we, they finished their study in 2019. Since then, we've been evaluating how, how do we add capacity to this, to this, to this roadway? We are looking at just adding a lane simply. We actually, we did have an open house in November, November 1st of 2023. We completed our environmental investigations and had a signed document by the Minnesota Department of Transportation at the end of February, and right now, we're in that comment period of, of this environmental document, which we published on March 19th, and the comment period is going to end on April 18th. From then, if we don't receive any substantial comments that would make us change our course, we will begin the design, final design process, and we'll begin that in 2024, and we're anticipating that we'll be, we'll begin construction in 2025. So what did we look at? This is a pretty simple project, straightforward. We're not really looking to do many changes, except for simply add a lane for, you know, for traffic. We looked at whether or not we should add a lane in the middle of the roadway. If you notice, the roadway right now currently has a grassy median, so there's space in there. So we looked at whether we should do that, but you can see in our first drawing there that if we did that, we'd have to build a median barrier, and it would all be paved in order to make that work. We also looked at whether we could build another lane to the outside of the road, and there's a lot of space out there to do that. It's a pretty wide section. Really, what we wanted to make sure what we weren't doing is buy new right-of-way in order to build this additional lane. We also evaluated looking at a dynamic shoulder, and what that means is we'd have to put some messaging signs, we'd have to repay, rebuild the shoulder so that it's like a lane, but it would only be used during those peak hours when we really need people on that, on that lane. It would require a lot of overset, overhead signing, electrical, you know, communications to drivers when they can use the lane and when they cannot, and it would also require, you know, enforcement in order for, make sure people use the lane at the right times. But ultimately, the alternative that we chose was mostly to add to the outside, because as I mentioned, even if you do the dynamic shoulder, there's a lot that has to go into that. It's not simply just rebuilding a shoulder. You have to try to make sure that people only use it at the right times. There's a lot of room out there to build to the outside, except we did, we did fall into some areas where we would have environmental impacts that we wouldn't have to do if we built to the inside. So there's a couple, there's a short area where we have an inside line, or we built to the, we're going to build to the inside just in the eastbound direction between Main Street and Hanson Boulevard. So it's a little bit of a combination of outside and inside, but it really is intended to reduce the impacts resulting from this project. So what did we look at, look at when our environmental assessment? This is kind of a big overview as to the things we looked at. There's a lot in this document, but I'm just going to highlight the key things. We looked at land use, mainly right-of-way. How are we going to affect right-of-way? There's a lot of water resources, like wetlands and floodplains, even within the right-of-way. We have contamination and regulated weeds in our area, fish and wildlife endangered species. We have visual impacts. As you'll see, we're, we're looking at noise walls. We looked at air quality, noise and vibration. Obviously, this is transportation project, so we're going to tell you about the, how this improves things for you, and then what permits and approvals we need as we move forward. So as I mentioned, one of the goals is to not have to buy new right-of-way in order to build the project. So we, we achieved that goal, and we won't have any new right-of-way as a result of this project. We do disturb about 65 acres of land. That's all within the MINDOT right-of-way. We have quite a bit of cubic yards of fill. We are going to not only add a lane, which means we have to push the shoulders out, and so we'll have to fill some ditches, but we are going to mill and overlay even the inside so some of that pavement is more consistent throughout. How are we addressing this? We do have some fill in the, in the, below the 100-year floodplain. We're going to build some compensatory storage in ditch, in ditch areas, which is good. We're mostly using what's out there. We'll offset some fill. We'll, we're going to provide some storage that is 27,400 cubic yards, so it's more than what we're filling. So we feel that that will be permissible, will be able to permit that and achieve, and be able to build the project. And the project is, is actually a result of the growth that we anticipate in the area, so this is consistent with the growth and the land use. We're going to increase the impervious surface because we're building another lane by 11.4 acres. We have about 0.9 acres of wetland impacts, which is quite small for a project like this. We have, we are going to increase runoff discharge into Coon Creek, and we're going to have to get permits and, and build best management practices in order to obtain those permits. We do have a, a small impact to ditch 54, and as I said, we have to meet the regulatory agency's requirements in order to obtain our permits in order to build these projects. So those are things we're committed to doing. As we look at the project, there is contaminated waste within the right-of-way footprint. We had seven high-risk areas, 24 medium, 10 low, and 353 minimally risk, personal, risk areas. Again, these are, these are pretty common things that we find in our highway projects, and we have to work with the, the regulatory agencies, local, state, and county, and federal to do the right things in order to address those and provide a plan for them in order to obtain permits to move forward. We also have fish and wildlife impacts in the area. This, the northern longyear bat is, continues to come up on nearly every project we have. We have the potential of affecting that, and so we're going to have, as well as the Rusty Patch Bumblebee, the, we have to commit with the Fish and Wildlife Agencies as to what kind of things we're going to do to avoid those impacts. And while I don't have the exact things, well, maybe I actually do have the exact thing, I just have gone past my thing. We are going to restrict clear, clear, tree clearing activities at specific times of the year. We actually have to use specialized, specialized lights in the nighttime for the, for the bat, and we also have to inspect bridges and culverts to make sure that these things aren't present while we're working in the area. We also have a bald eagle's nest in our area, and we're going to have to obtain a permit from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to, and tell them how we're going to work around that nest, so we're not affecting that nest. The same thing, we also have state and threatened endangered species for, the Blanding's turtle. We are going to be looking at fencing as well as erosion control measures that reduce the impacts to this turtle, as well as safe road passages such as culverts, and work with the DNR as to where those culverts are going to go. We also have visual findings on this project that are really related to the noise walls that we are, we are proposing on this project. They, they will provide a visual impact as you look, as you're driving the road. It's going to look different. Obviously, you're going to be looking at a noise wall, as well as your view shed, as you're looking across the road. The way we're going to address that is we're going to make the, some, put some aesthetics features on these noise walls, as you can see in the graphic to the right, so make them a little more visually appealing, as well as allow vegetation to grow with them, and even provide vegetation in certain areas if, as appropriate. Air quality, because we are improving a congestion problem, we don't anticipate any air quality impacts as a result of this project. However, during construction, you would anticipate dust, as well as some slight impacts to air quality during construction. Noise and vibration, these are always, this is probably the, usually the biggest issue on a project like this. We do, there are no noise walls out there currently, so there's going to be areas that are automatically going to exceed the current noise wall thresholds. So the first thing we do is we look at, we do monitoring to evaluate whether, what the current noise levels are. We identify who is it going to exceed the current, the, the noise thresholds as established by the state, as well as who's going to have an increase in noise of over 5 decibels. We, that will tell us where we're going to, we're going to look at putting walls, and then we're going to determine whether the walls are cost-effective. We just want to make sure that the walls provide the most benefit for the cost we're putting in them, and MINDOT has a very particular policy as to exactly how we calculate that. So we, we have four walls in the project area that were considered cost-effective, and the MINDOT policy, when we determine something's cost-effective, is that we work with the communities who directly benefit from these walls, so the receptors that benefit from that, that noise wall benefit, which would be a 5-decibel decrease, we ask them to vote as to whether or not they want the wall. And three of the walls were voted in, one of the walls was not voted in. So three of the walls, as you see in this graphic, are moving forward. Transportation, again, this project is a, is meant to improve transportation. Our analysis says that it will reduce, I'm sorry, it will reduce delays, congestion by quite a bit, and reduce crashes as a result of reducing delays. This will provide better mobility for the users of Highway 10 and reliability. At the end of this, we have several permits we're going to have to obtain. We do have federal funds attached to this project, so Federal Highway has to approve our project for it to move forward. It's, it's also a MINDOT project, so they have to approve it. We have a, we have permits that we're going to have to obtain and get approvals from the, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and the Coon Creek Watership District. Those are all related to the items I've already described. So why are we here? We are interested in public feedback. We will collect your feedback. Every single comment we will collect, and it will go in our project rector, records. I'm not sure if we're going to get much here, in fact, a lot of those projects have been pretty quiet when we, we do reach out to the public. But anyway, we, we're really looking for substantive comments on the analysis that we've done on our environmental document. We want to know whether we've missed something. We want to make sure that our environmental document and our identification of impacts and mitigations are complete. So that's the kind of comments we're looking for. So again, we can provide the comments here, or as I mentioned earlier... So, again, we can provide the comments here, or as I mentioned earlier, we can send, those can be sent to Nick Dobda at the email address provided here, as well as the mailing address, and those are due April 18th by 5:00 p.m., and then our comment period will close, and we will complete our environmental review. That's all I have.
Oh, very good.
You want to comment?
Well, no, hang on, hang on, we're, we're going to open the public hearing in just a moment, and then we'll invite you up to the front for your public comment.
I got some proposals.
All right. So is that it from staff? Does anybody have any questions before I open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griswold.
I've got one question. The lead agency on the whole project, is that going to be Anoka County, or is that going to be MINDOT?
This is going to actually be a pretty unique project, so.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you come up to the mic, even if it's a short answer? Yeah, thank you. And who, who are you?
My name is Mike Bronzer, I'm with MINDOT, I'm the North Area Engineer for the Metro District for MINDOT. It's a great question. This is a unique project in that Anoka County, as mentioned, kind of initiated this project, initiated this study. They've led preliminary design, and they're actually going to take this thing all the way through final design, and then at that point, they're going to hand the final plans, specifications, and estimate to MINDOT. We will let the project, and then we'll do construction administration.
And the follow-up, so then it's Anoka County that would be responsible for all this permitting that you mentioned, that big, long list, getting all those permits, that's Anoka County?
Correct, yeah.
Buttoned up, hand it over to you guys.
Correct, yes. Yep, yep. They'll basically, they'll hand us over kind of the final package, and then we'll, we'll package it up for, for bidding and put it out to, to let, for contractors to bid on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I have a question, if anybody has questions during the public hearing process, how will that work? Well, I assume they'll just state the question, and then somebody will get back to them with a response, or they'll look to a website or something, or what's the process on that? I don't, I imagine we're not going to get into a Q and A tonight.
Correct, Mayor and Council. I think we can, you know, if it's a, a question that staff, city staff can follow up on or work with the project team, we'll make sure that they get a response.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, so then I'm going to open the public hearing on this. If you have questions, just state your question, and just know that somebody will get back to you. Did you have a question?
No, I was just saying, make sure and come up there.
Oh, okay, yeah. So I'll open the public hearing, please come up to the microphone, state your name, and then go ahead and let us know what you've got.
I've been here before.
All right.
You guys probably remember me. My name's Rochelle Shackle, I live in the Woodcrest area. I'm going to comment on this project, Highway 10, pretty simple. What do we live on? Planet Earth. What do we call it back in the 70s? Mother Earth. What is it? A big old ecosystem. What happened in the 70s, '71? Greenpeace. You haven't listened then, and you're still not listening now. 1,600, half a billion people on this planet. 1,800, 1 billion people. Before then, we reused stuff, everything we made recycled back into the earth, friendly life. 1920, that was a big change, industrialization and cars. Got too easy for life, people don't have to work hard, we don't work hard. We go to job 40 hours a week and go home and enjoy the rest of the week. That's when industrialization and cars got going. Industrial waste. Today, 8 billion people on this planet. No matter what you do, solar panels, I was just a delivery driver for green tech, solar panels, electrical cars. As long as you got what? Two things. Population growth, industrial waste. You're not going to solve the problem. End of my comment on that, I can't help but comment on that, because it's pretty self-explanatory. I got five diplomas, I listened to everybody when I was young, from '76 to '86. Graduated from high school, tooling welding, was in the military, two years active, four years National Guard, as a cook under the college program, went to school for auto mechanics. So I've listened all my life, and it's not hard to figure out how this planet works, big old ecosystem, so that's my opinion. I'm here for these proposals again. The first one has to do with that disc golf course.
Oh, no, 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 we're just, we're just, we're only doing comments on public, on Highway 10 right now.
Okay, so do I get a comment on those at the end here?
You can come back during open mic and, and.
Okay. So was that proper to do that about greenpeace and stuff right now? Or no? Well, I said it.
Okay, thank you.
And this is true.
Anybody else here for public hearing on Highway 10 project? I'll ask a third time, any, oh, there we go, sir.
Colonel, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question. The wall.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I get your name?
Joe Peterson.
Okay.
Coon Rapids, Coon Rapids, President, along Highway 10, by, by Coon, Crook Lake. Does the wall come in after the third lane is completed, or is the wall at the same time being put up to cut down the noise and the dust and all that stuff? Can anybody answer? I don't know if this is the right place to answer that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if we'll have that answer for you, but you'll, you'll get it if.
What comes first? Chicken or the egg?
Yeah. Bill, what's your address, and then our?
Joe, Joe.
No, what was the address?
Joe, 12771 Johnquill Street.
Okay.
12771 Johnquill Street.
They'll, they'll send you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here for the public hearing on Highway 10? Anybody else for the public hearing on Highway 10? We're going to close the public hearing on that. And we don't have any action to take on that one, right? So we're moving to item 11. Thank you very much for coming in. Consider Resolution 24-1 Sub 9, awarding a contract for street reconstruction project 24-1. Mr. Hanson, are you happy with how these came in?
Mayor and council, we're very happy with the bids that we received, so we recently opened bids for our 24-1 street reconstruction project. We did that on March 25th, and the lowest bid came in from Northwest Asphalt at $5,25,239.11. Northwest, and by the way, that was well below our engineer's estimate at 6.3 million. The lowest bidder, Northwest Asphalt, has completed a number of projects in the city of Coon Rapids over the years and performed well every time. We do have a neighborhood public meeting scheduled in the Woodcrest Area Park for the residents that live within the entire project area, where we'll talk about schedule, get frequently asked questions, we'll have our contact information for not only the city staff, but also the contractor. That's going to be on April 24th at 5:00 to 6:30, and schedules will be coming out here soon. Specialist assessments will not be adopted until May 7th. So with that, I'll answer any other questions that the council has.
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hanson, on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21 dash, sorry, 24-1 Sub 9, awarding a contract to Northwest Asphalt Company for $5,25,239.11. Second.
We have a motion by Rayrower and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this? That's pretty impressive, there's four of them within $250,000 on a project of this size, so that's. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider Resolution 24-3 Sub 9, awarding a contract for the miscellaneous trail reconstruction project 24-3. Mr. Hanson, anything on that one?
Yeah, mayor and council staff opened up bids for this project on May, March 22nd, and the project itself contemplates reconstruction of a trail, a city trail that's along Roundlake Boulevard, south of Main Street. We also plan to reconstruct a trail that is south of 121st Avenue, and then goes and connects with the Sand Creek Trail. We will also be doing some pedestrian crossing improvements at Unity and 121st as part of that work. And then also reconstruction of the Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension Trail from the Met Council Lift Station to Sycamore Street. The lowest bid came in at $156,874.25, also well below our engineer's estimate. Aslexon Services has performed this very similar project for us the last two years in our city, and has always performed well. So with that, the work will be scheduled between June and August this summer, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Maybe you could work with marketing to come up with a better terminus than the Met Council Lift Station on one end, you know? Seems like, for a trail, it should have something a little nicer than that.
I could say the historic bridge.
There you go, historic bridge, I like that. All right, anybody have any questions, Mr. Hanson, on this? Anybody want to move this one forward?
So, Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-3 Sub 9, awarding a contract to Aslexon Services Incorporated for $156,874.25 for Project 24-3 Miscellaneous City Trail Reconstruction Project.
Second. Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there a discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. The next tie I'm going to give to you, Councilmember Novak, just so you know. Item 13 is to consider Resolution 19-21 Sub 9, awarding a contract for the Coon Creek Trail Project 19-21. That gives us an idea how long we've been working on this one, doesn't it?
That's correct, yes, it has a 2019 project number. So this is for the Coon Creek Trail Project, that is the proposed trail that starts at 121st Avenue and Shenandoah Boulevard, and then heads west to Coon Creek, and then turns north up to Main Street. Staff opened bids on this project on March 22nd. The lowest bid was provided by Blackstone Contractors at $1,431,916.68. That is above our engineer's estimate, which was at $1,277,840. The understanding we got from talking to Blackstone was that the material costs for the boardwalk increased significantly in the COVID time period and just have not gone down. So that was a little bit of a surprise to us, but we have worked with Blackstone in the past on projects, and they have performed successfully. We are recommending award of the contract. Work would not start until after June 1st for this particular project due to many of the same fish and wildlife concerns that were talked about in the Highway 10 presentation. And then we would anticipate finishing in the spring of 2025. With that, I'll answer any questions that council has.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember Armstrong?
Yeah, just for my clarification, that, that original bid, that 1.2, was that, was that done back in 2019, 20, is that the?
The engineer's estimate, I believe you're referring to, is that correct? Yep. And it's an estimate, it's based on similar projects that we have seen. A lot of the numbers we got from the engineering firm that designed the boardwalk, most of the trail items are pretty much right in line with what we expected. There's just not a lot of boardwalk-type projects like this that we can really get a good understanding, and then the market has just changed within the last couple of years.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Griswold?
I have a similar question, I had a question on that, that budget. We're in over the engineer's budget, but I understand that, you know, there was a, there was a million five left budgeted from the 2013 referendum, the voter-approved referendum that we wanted to build these trails with. So with the 1.4, 1.431 bid here from Blackstone Construction Contractors, are we still within our referendum budget?
Mr. Hammer?
Councilmember Griswold, council, no, is the answer. We're about 200,000 over the budget. I'll, I'll let you know that 92,000 of that has been spent just to get us to this point, and we haven't bonded for that. So those are dollars that are already spent, so it wouldn't be our intent to bond for those. The other item was 125,000 in wetland mitigation, which was more than what we expected it to be, and we've still got about 75,000. So that 200,000 is down to a little over 100,000. We had about a $40,000 savings in the miscellaneous trails project we just awarded as well, and we also anticipate some other cost savings to get us down to probably about a $40,000 overage that we'd still have to cover, and that would be available in the, in the park improvement fund, fund balance.
So all told, with some other work that you're doing on our projects, we're going to basically be only $40,000 below our estimate that we, I mean, it's a 2019 estimate, right? So I think, given that, I mean, we're, we're still right in there on this. I've been kind of talking to the council all along, and I'm like, I would support this if we stayed within budget. I would say if we're within $40,000 over five years, we're within budget. I did have another question if I could. The boardwalk portion, I have never seen a map that actually shows where that boardwalk portion is going to go in, so I know you don't have a, a graphic for me or anything like that, but could you tell me about how long is that boardwalk going to be? And then is that, that construction has to take place in the wintertime? Is that correct?
Yeah, so to answer the question, it's, it's between, and it's in, it's an open area of water, or a, a, an open water area that is located between Partridge Street and Thrush Street. The length is 550 feet long, so it's a pretty substantially long boardwalk. And ideally, the construction would happen in the winter months, but if the contractor chooses to construct it other ways, they can use crane mats, there's other means and methods that they can choose, we don't dictate exactly how they build it, just that they are considerate of the environment and follow all of the requirements of the specifications.
Councilmember Griswold, if you look at the project location map that is an attachment, you can see it going right through the middle of that open water body. That's the extents primarily of that boardwalk. And again, it's, on either end of that is a sanitary sewer manhole, because that's our sanitary sewer corridor, so we're stopping that boardwalk short on either end, so we can still get access from the trail to that sanitary sewer.
All right, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
So, Councilmember Griswold, you finish?
Yes.
Thanks. I just had a quick question about the materials for the boardwalk. Are they like treated lumber, or is that like?
It's treated lumber, that's correct, yep.
Like brown-treated or green-treated?
It's brown-treated, I believe it would be.
Okay. I can understand how that cost might go up a bit.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hanson or Mr. Hammer on this?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
No questions, I just wanted to thank staff in general, and just congratulate everybody. This has been going on for a very long time, and a lot of details were involved in doing this. And so, in order to get this project accomplished and pretty much in budget, Councilmember Griswold, amazing work, thank you very much.
Thought there was going to be a motion there.
Sorry. I was actually bringing it up again, but I can do that in a moment.
Councilmember Rayrower?
Well, I'll just add to that, again, yes, it's been a very long time coming. The voters passed that park bond referendum back in 2013, it's taken significant amount of time and effort from staff to get this one last trail here finished. I was very excited to see this, where we get to do our vote tonight, so with that, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 19-21 Sub 9, awarding a contract to Blackstone Contractors LLC for $1,431,916.68 for Project 19-21 Coon Creek Trail Project.
I will second that, Your Honor, she beat me to it.
You didn't have to jump on that, you.
I know, I'm not wearing my glasses.
I was going to give you the tie anyway, you know. All right, we have a motion by Rayrower and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll just say, and yes, that we've been working on this for a long time, and our ultimate goals are within the city with our parks and our trails, to be able to connect people north, south, east, west, across the city, and this is one good piece to help make those connections for our residents as they traverse around the city on our trails. So, looking forward to having it done.
All right, we have a motion and a second, do we have further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 14, to consider a joint powers agreement for the signal reconstruction and ADA improvements of CSAH County State. powers agreement for the signal reconstruction and ADA improvements of CSAH County State Aid Highway, I'll bet, 3, at 86th Lane Northeast. Mr. Hanson, you want to hit the highlights on this one?
Yes.
Explain why we're sending all this money to Blaine today.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is for County State Aid Highway, or what we call CASA 3, and 86th Lane, which is physically within the city of Blaine. But it does serve properties that are in Coon Rapids. So Blaine was thoughtful enough to recall the agreement from 1984, that where Coon Rapids had committed to funding a portion of the signal cost, as well as the ongoing maintenance. So Anoka County is now proposing to replace that same traffic signal, as well as doing some ADA improvements around the intersection, and then a mill and overlay, a much-needed mill and overlay of the pavement surface, all in that same area. So Coon Rapids portion is really specific to our cost portion is really specific to the traffic signal itself, and then some of the ongoing maintenance of the power going forward. But the the project is planned for construction this year, in 2024, and we would propose to use state aid funds to cover our share of the cost.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Well, I do have a question, and you brought it up, right? So the this physical, everything is located in Blaine. And I just I'm just having a hard time figuring out why Coon Rapids is paying 176,000 of this project in Blaine. Can you explain a little bit about the legal agreement that we entered into in 1984? Is that the reason we're doing in this? Or are we doing this because we're good neighbors to Blaine? What?
I think all you have to do is look at that, who that intersection serves. It's almost exclusively Coon Rapids businesses that it serves. The line, the line from Blaine to Coon Rapids is right next to the intersection, and everybody from the west is coming out of those Coon Rapids businesses, The Range, Urban Air, Planet Fitness, Savers, whatever else is in there. So that's why I guess I support this.
And that was what we had determined as staff, why it made sense for the city of Coon Rapids to be part of this agreement and getting the signal replaced. And I believe that's what the 1984 agreement contemplated as well.
To specifically answer your question, it was a joint powers agreement between the three parties back in that day, Anoka County, Blaine, and Coon Rapids. Very similar to what we're talking about today.
Okay. And then it's a county road, too. So that mill and overlay, that's all on the Anoka County, that's Anoka County portion of that?
Yes, that's all being funded by Anoka County. But there is a portion of 86th Lane that is being mill and overlaid as well, a very short portion. And Coon Rapids and Blaine will be splitting that, because again, it's part of that axis that serves those businesses. So it's a very minor part of the cost overall. But that that is going to happen as well.
One more question, if I might, just to get a
Go for it.
Understanding of this. What, do you know what Blaine's contribution is? Is it 176,000 as well?
It's more than that.
Traffic intersection.
If I may, Blaine's contribution is similar. It's slightly higher. They have to cover the sidewalk costs, the ADA improvements. But they have 25% of the signal cost. We take 25% of the signal cost. They are also responsible to put the power and the energy to it, replace the light bulbs and things like that, and we help participate in some of that. They just have to do the administrative work to get it done, and they had to supply that power early on. So they're not much different than what our costs are. And I think, again, at the staff level, we were we were satisfied that the longstanding agreement and the benefit to Coon Rapids, 25%, most of that is the traffic signal in and of itself.
Okay. Yeah, and thanks, Mr. Mayor, for that description, too. That makes sense to me.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hammer or Mr. Hanson, or somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
One of you guys, go ahead. Councilmember Armstrong?
I was going to say, since this is my neck of the woods, and I know I've got some constituents that would be very happy when that's all repaired, I will make a motion that the council approve the JPA with Anoka County and the city of Blaine for the signal reconstruction and ADA improvements of CASA 3, University Avenue Northeast at 86th Lane Northeast.
Second.
Motion by Armstrong, and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries, as long as we don't actually have to say CASA. That troubles me. All right. Item 15, Consider Resolution 24-49, a resolution supporting MACTA efforts to modernize public education and government, or what we like to call PEG, programming community TV funding. Mr. Strauss, do you want to, or Ms. Ring?
Well, isn't it great that Mr. Strauss is here? He's going to give us some background about what's been going on down at the state Capitol. But what we have before you tonight is a request to approve Resolution 2449. It does pertain to legislation that is dealing with local community TV funding and various components. It's House File 4182. It's making its way, being heard in a couple of different committees. And station manager Eric Strauss has kept very close tabs on the situation. He'll give you a brief update and basically summarize what this would mean for the city of Coon Rapids.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, counsel. First off, what is MACTA? You did pretty good working through that, Your Honor. MACTA is the Minnesota Association of Community Telecommunications Administrators. What is that? It is a statewide professional organization of city representatives and staff, as well as the state chapter of NTOA, which is the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. And both were established to address the issues concerning cable television and franchise development, and have evolved into an advocacy organization to help shape the rapidly changing telecommunications landscape as it affects members. And that's why they are leading the charge on these legislative efforts. I should mention, the city of Coon Rapids has been dues-paying member of MACTA for at least 30 of their 40 years of existence. They were here to start the original cable franchises, which have served not just the city of Coon Rapids, but cities throughout the state to make sure that cable franchises had certain consumer protections, build-out requirements, so that all residents were receiving cable in a certain amount of time. So as our cable industry has been evolving, and people are now watching more video on the internet, cord-cutting, things like that, MACTA has reached out to basically modernize the funding. I've been actually on the MACTA board for the last eight years, and also president. This is my third year as president. So I've been active. This is not the only city considering resolutions. There have been many passed already to garner support. Ms. Ring mentioned some of the committees we've passed, including the Commerce Committee with our own Coon Rapids representative, Zach Stevenson, who chairs that committee. So we're excited about that. I'll mention there were, actually, there were two bills that MACTA was following. The one we're talking about tonight is the Equal Access to Broadband Act. That is basically trying to level the playing field between cable providers and our cable franchising, to allow us to do broadband franchising that follows that same methodology. The other, the other bill that we were looking at was more of a streaming fee, which it doesn't look like that's going to go anywhere at this point in the legislative session. So we actually have another hearing coming up this Thursday at the House, Senate, and Local Government Committee. So it is an, it is actually an opportunity, if the council does choose to pass the resolution, that we would be able to submit that as additional written testimony. The deadline is actually tomorrow at noon, so our timing is actually quite perfect. So but the other part of the broadband act, obviously, the biggest interest for, I think, the city, two things. This is passive legislation, meaning it just allows cities to franchise with broadband. If there are cities that don't want to franchise, they don't have to. One of the recent amendments that I mentioned in here is a max out of 5% for franchise fees, which matches cable, and then up to 3% for PEG channels, for PEG funding, like CTN, Coon Rapids. So all of that is negotiable with any broadband companies as they come into Coon Rapids. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that this is also about right-of-way protections, so that broadband companies currently, they're they're for-for-profit, just like cable companies. And so just to kind of level off that playing field, and to allow cities to continually control at the local level our right-of-ways. With that, I guess I'll stand for any questions.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Strauss on this? You've done a lot of work down there. Thank you for all your time down at the Capitol, and for, I like the way this has gone here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah. This is something that we've talked about a few times in the past. And when we look at it, you know, how we support, you know, the council meeting being put on our city cable channels, all of the things that we do to provide that information via a medium for people who want to watch at home, who can't come out. The franchise fees off of the cable are what actually are the primary funding source. And as people have cut the cord, they're not doing cable, they're doing all these other broadbands, but they still expect the same level of communication and programming and whatnot. And so we need to be able to look at, how can we, you know, level that playing field, make sure that we're looking at how those funding sources are coming together, and looking at that these bills are a way to be able to give us an opportunity to do that in the future. So I appreciate the support and all the work that you're doing with it. And so I think, for me, I would support this resolution.
Enough to make a
I will make the motion
All right.
That we approve Resolution 24-49 to support MACTA, MACTA efforts to modernize public education and government, PEG, programming, community TV funding.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, and a second by Ray Rower. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I just want to add, I just want to concur with Councilmember Geisler on this. Our community television programming, we have to find a way to sustain. It is a way to, you know, get quality programming, local programming, fact-based, engage with your community directly. We can't lose that in the, you know, the era of social media and propaganda and all the different things that we get inundated with. So just definitely support this resolution.
And CTN is phenomenal. I mean, they're award-winning, they are top-notch, you know, you can watch the football games, you can watch, you know, high school sports, basketball, what have you. The concerts, the choir concerts, the band concerts. So if there's things that you want to see, you know, and just the the highlights of what's happening in our community, that is invaluable, I think, to our residents. And I commend CTN for what they do. And I want to make sure that we see them continue.
Yeah, I agree. We have an aging community, and we have a lot of folks that are not going to make it down to the high school for the concert or the football games, or to hear to watch council meetings, or whatever it is. And for them to be able to stay at home and watch it, and keep connected to their community, I don't know how else we would do that without CTN.
Yes.
And that's a very expensive proposition.
Okay. Any, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in
favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Thank you, Ms. Ring.
Thank you all for your support.
Item 16 is to consider, where is it here?
Yep.
I guess my, I didn't get that highlighted. I'm going to have to go through all these pages here. There we go. Item 16 is to consider the 14th Amendment to the Service Contract for the Center for Energy and Environment. Mr. Brown, you are here. You kind of blended into the wall over there.
I can provide a little context. This, this is largely a housekeeping item. So the Center for Energy, Environment, and Environment administers the city's various housing loan programs for homeowners, prospective home buyers. As you likely remember, traditionally, those programs were funded with what had been the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation, which was created back in the 1980s, later became the Coon Rapids Home Improvement Foundation. Back about three years ago or so, that entity was disbanded, and really the city took over administration of all of those funds. Back when the Mortgage Assistance Foundation handled the funds, the contracts with CEE were amended periodically to add more funds to the program when the previous amount of funding had had run out. In the last couple of years, we've been trying to shift more to just simply accounting for these programs in the annual budget process, rather than going back and adding more funds. In fact, a week from now, we are planning a work session with all of you to talk about some potential enhancements to those programs, since we'll have access to some additional revenue. As part of that, it's likely we'll make some additional changes to that CEE contract. The last $1.2 million was was provided to CEE back in May of 2023. We've now made it all the way through that $1.2 million. This 14th Amendment is proposes adding an additional $800,000, which is reflected in the budget for this year. So that's why it's largely a housekeeping item. And it will just kind of keep, keep things going for the time being before we amend the contract. I'll mention that all of the programs have been very well utilized in the last few years, since interest rates have been have been a little bit higher than they have been. So staff is recommending that you approve this amendment. We'll talk a little bit more about the future next week, and I can answer any questions.
And then just at a high level, Mr. Brown, most of this money is in the form of loans that will be coming back to the city, correct?
It is. We do, we have been operating the Front Door Program out of that same fund. We're proposing some potential changes to that. But yeah, CEE administers the loan programs. Any grant programs are administered internally by city staff.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Brown on this?
Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I know that we talked about this in the budget process for 2024, and we allocated $800,000 from that mortgage. And there's, there's plenty of money there, too, to support these programs. And I think it's important, because, you know, low-income assistance and down payment assistance is important to keep, you know, our houses affordable in this, in this market. I'm just wondering, in, we're going to have a work session on in a couple of weeks, and that is that going to be talking about the 2025 allocated amounts and where we're at? Because I, I do want to take a stronger look at this.
Yeah, we will be taking a look at 2025 and going forward. It's really our hope that this, the former Mortgage Assistance Foundation pool is something that, you know, can be utilized in perpetuity. And as those loans are repaid, the funds come back and we can loan them out. So it's, it's our intent to have a sustainable operation.
Mr. Mayor, I definitely support this agreement. I support what we talked about in the, in the budget process for last year. And I also do just want to state that there's a lot of cities doing a lot of programs like this right now. So we want to really take a hard look at that, and make sure we can maintain our competitiveness, and do whatever we can to make our homes affordable in this community.
Well, and to keep, keep updating our old housing stock, right?
More than anything, I think. And to keep the programs, you know, sustainable, you know, funded.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Yeah, these programs are just awesome. We get lots of feedback from our residents that they love them. Besides the amazing Home for Generations 2 and Front Door Program that really brighten up the city and help our residents make improvements, there's really important ones in here, like the Coon Rapids Emergency Deferred Loan Program. Somebody who would have a repair that would make their house uninhabitable or dangerous to occupants, they could get this if they don't have, say, all of a sudden, $10,000 for that type of home repair. They can get assistance with that. And so we're keeping folks in their homes here in Coon Rapids. We really need these for our residents. Happy to. Happy to support this.
Okay. Anybody happy enough to make a motion? Councilmember Carlson?
I'm happy enough. Make a motion to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a 14th Amendment to the service contract, together with any necessary documents, with the Center for Energy and Environment that provides an additional $800,000 in funding allocated to the program loan funds.
Second. Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. The next is simply an introduction of ordinance amending definitions, use table, and LDR standards in City Code 11-201, 11-601, 11-602, and 11-603. Mr., there you are. Mr. Patzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So this is the second in a series of four to five sections of the amendment to the residential section of the zoning code that I'm going to have here before you today. And I do have a presentation for this. If I can figure out how to pull it up, then I will use it. If not, shouldn't be too much, I should be able to do it from memory. Okay, perfect, here we go. So, the four sections of the zoning code that are being proposed to be amended as part of this ordinance amendment are the definitions, general residential standards and use table for the residential section of the code, as well as the LDR 1 and LDR 2, so Low Density Residential 1 and 2 standards. And the purpose is just to align the zoning code with modern development style, some needs of residents that have been brought up, and with state statute, and as well as to do some housekeeping. So we have discussed with both the Planning Commission and the city council. Staff have held work sessions on all of these zoning code amendment items multiple times. So there have been two work sessions with the council, one work session with the Planning Commission, and then for this section of the ordinance amendment, a public hearing with the Planning Commission. So most of these items have already been discussed. There have been a few small changes that are being proposed by staff via the Planning Commission that I'm going to touch on. I'm not going to go over everything that's already been discussed at the work sessions because most of it hasn't changed. So, for the definitions and the general zoning standards, most of this is exactly what was talked about at the work session. And I can always, if there are any questions, I can always go back into more detail. One of the changes to the use table that was added, and this was discovered by staff, is kind of an oversight previously with the change in definition to townhomes. Townhomes are being proposed to be allowed in the HDR, High Density Residential Zoning District, as well as the MDR Zoning District. Currently, they're only allowed in the MDR Zoning District. But updates to the definition of townhomes is kind of rolling the definitions of several different types of townhome-like developments into each other. Previously, these types of dwelling units were allowed in the HDR District. So in order to continue to allow those in the HDR District, staff are proposing changing the use table to allow townhomes in the HDR District. In practice, this isn't a change in policy in terms of how the zoning code has been administered, but it does look like one, and it is a change in how townhomes are kind of being viewed. As far as Section 11-602, the LDR 1 standards, the main change that staff are proposing to this are to remove the maximum driveway width in the LDR 1 District. And this is based on conversation in the previous work sessions. And this is also based on observation about the general shape and form of the lots in the LDR 1 District. Many of them are unusually shaped, and many of the garages are unusually shaped in the 40-foot, 40-foot width maximum for driveways doesn't apply very well as a standard across the LDR 1 District. So staff are proposing removing that. And they still have the 24-foot width maximum in the right-of-way, 30% lot coverage maximum, and the 50% front yard coverage maximum that still apply and keep someone from essentially paving their entire yard. So the staff found that the 40-foot maximum was not necessarily useful in that district. And for the LDR 2 District, the 40-foot maximum that was originally proposed is proposed to stay, and the caveat being in cases where the garage is wider than 40 feet, the driveway can be as wide as the garage in the LDR 2 District. And most of the lots in the LDR 2 District are more of a standard size and shape, and it's a lot rarer to have these sort of large exceptions where the lots would need a much wider driveway or an oddly shaped driveway in order to be appropriate for the location of the house or the shape of the garage. But there is still that caveat for garages that are wider than 40 feet. And staff also proposing adding the definition of residential recreation, which includes tennis courts, basketball courts, hockey rinks, any sort of residential sports use, and allowing that with a setback that matches the setback for patios, so that'd be a five-foot setback generally. And it looks like I might have a question.
The hockey rinks, basketball courts, tennis courts, you know, those are really, they're really not the same. Because tennis courts and basketball courts go in and they're permanent. Hockey courts pop up in the winter and then they go away again.
True.
You know, so is there any, I guess I just, I would be afraid of, for example, there's one that showed up on Mississippi Boulevard, and because of how their property is laid out, they have to put it out on a side lot near the Boulevard. And I don't know that that would be approved for the other recreation. I guess I would just be concerned about that one, because it's Minnesota.
Excellent, yes, excellent. Yes, thank you. That's true, and this is only for permanent structures. So a hockey rink is probably not a great example. I was thinking of a permanent hockey rink, which would be keeping the boards around the hockey rink up year-round. That's very rare, so that's not something that you'd probably see.
Did anybody do that?
Yes, there are examples of that. Typically, it's a very seasonal, temporary structure that's put up, flooded, and then removed this time of year. So, in that case, I don't think that would apply. But in the situation where you might want to put in, like, a hard surface ring for roller blading, stick handling, that sort of thing, then it wouldn't.
Okay. All right, sorry. Curriana.
Not a problem. I think that was a great question. I don't know why I put hockey rinks in there. So with that, the Planning Commission did also hold a public hearing for this. There were no comments, and Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval for this. So that's all I have for a presentation. I do have a recommended motion. Thank you.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Patzner? So, the way you included it in the packet, because you're completely replacing these, you had the entire ordinance double underlined, which I spent about an hour then, reading, going, what's changed then? What's changed? So then I went back and printed the old one, so then I went back to December and printed out the one that showed the changes. It would help me if we included the one that just shows the changes, because that was just a lot to read, to study every little line of it. Okay, I'm done. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Patzner? Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Guskowiac?
This is just going to be an introduction tonight, right?
Just an introduction.
So if we close it, it's introduced and that's done. So maybe it is a good time to ask the question. I think all of us on the council were brought to our attention of, like, a setback for greenhouses. And that was different than storage spaces or detached garages under 900 feet. And I'm wondering, can we make a small change and fix that while we're doing this? Or is that bringing the whole process back up again? I would, because we can, I can discuss it. I've got some, I'm prepared with some things, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Guskowiac. If it may be possible to make that change as part of this amendment change, and that would be convenient to do so, it does depend on how the public hearing was advertised during the Planning Commission meeting. So I might have to do a little bit more research to see if it would actually be possible to do that, or if doing that would invalidate that public hearing and set the whole process back. If not, and if council did want to direct staff to make that change, it could be done as part of one of the future ordinance amendments that would just include 11-601 as part of that amendment.
Okay. The, what was it? Mr. Brody?
We're just chatting about this.
Mayor and council, I mean, we are at an introduction. I don't think, and I just saw the proposed change, I don't think that represents a material change in the ordinance. It's pretty, it's a minor piece. I think staff would probably at least like a chance to maybe look at that. And I think we could bring it back at adoption and make that change without having to start over the process with the Planning Commission or amending it, because we are going to be bringing future amendments down the road to the Chapter 11, bringing it at that time. So I think we could, given this, the nature of that particular change that's being proposed, probably just bring it back for adoption, or maybe a recommendation from staff after we've had a chance to look at it, like, well, can we reconsider, have we thought about this piece?
Okay, sounds good. Okay. All right. At this point, any other questions then? If there are no other questions, in the case of Plan Case 24-4, we will consider the amending the definitions, the use table, and LDR standard, City Code 11-201, 11-601, 11-602, and 11-603. We'll consider that introduced. Item 18, consider an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 5-2000, lawful gambling. Oh, yeah, Mr. Patzner's gone. No, he's not doing that one. Ms. Lenzmeyer.
Mayor and council. Council met at a work session to discuss proposed changes to the lawful gambling code, and staff believes what we've presented tonight represents that discussion and direction. Those changes are to open it up, not restrict to dispensing only. So the local gambling organizations would be allowed five full operations. We would change the required contribution from 5% to 7%, and change the date of required contributions and necessary paperwork to within 20 days instead of 15. And if there are any questions, I can answer those.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
The only question I have is, will we be ready, I mean, I know this is just introduction to, would this be brought up for adoption then in a couple of weeks?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carlson, yes, that is the plan.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's no further questions.
Just one other side comment that I did double-check, you know, with staff on. So when we're moving the contribution from 5% to 7%, there is nothing in this ordinance or tied to how that additional funding needs to be directed, and that that would be future conversations with the staff on where those additional funds are going. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that there's nothing set in stone of where those funds are going.
Correct. All right. If there's no further questions, then we will consider the ordinance amending Chapter 5-2000 for lawful gambling introduced. And item 19 is to consider an introduction of an ordinance adding Chapter 6-900 Regulation of Pet Stores. Mr. Brody, you want to hit the highlights on this one?
I can, Your Honor and council. This is kind of the culmination. I think some residents contacted council about an ordinance of this kind, and we did workshop this. And so we're asking the council to introduce this ordinance. It would prohibit pet stores from selling or otherwise transferring dogs or cats, sort of a response to puppy mills and large commercial breeding facilities that aren't otherwise regulated. It does allow pet stores to still have, collaborate with animal shelters and rescue operations for adoption-type programs. And currently, there aren't any stores that we're aware of that are selling dogs or cats, but certainly this would then prohibit them from switching their policies to doing that or if any other future pet stores come into the city. I know, I think one of our neighboring cities does have a pet store that does sell animals or does sell dogs and cats. So I think it is appropriate that we would consider this ordinance and ask that you would introduce it tonight.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Brody?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Pretty much same question. I've been in communication with the resident about this for quite a while. Are we ready to go to adopt this in two weeks?
Councilmember Carlson, that is our intent. And then I think it becomes effective a couple of weeks after we publish it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Yeah, I would just add, yes, we've been contacted by residents, and, you know, and that's the goal, is that we hear from the people who live here. We consider it. If it benefits the welfare and safety of the people who live here and/or the pets that live here, then we, you know, like to move something like that forward. So what's, one of the things we discussed that I just wanted to share is although we don't have a pet store like this, it makes more sense to put it in place before we were to have a pet store like this. Because our intention wouldn't be to try to close down a business that somebody's already running, and now we're, you know, that would be more difficult. So this is a preventative measure.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiac?
You know, it says that we have research that has found that puppies and kittens are being sold in these commercial breeding facilities where animals are not adequately provided for. I mean, we actually have research that's showing that that's occurring. I'm just, you know, wondering if a small operation wants to start up a pet store in Coon Rapids, and they have, you know, a couple of litters a year, humanely taken care of, that's, we're going to preclude that with this ordinance?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, back to that research question. Who conducted the research? Was that Coon Rapids, or was that some, another?
It was, I did some research based on some other cities that did this, looked online, things like that. We didn't conduct any, wasn't out making any site visits, anything like that, but sort of based on general consensus that I saw on other cities that had passed similar ordinances prior to us.
Okay, so because the concern was from the resident that this was occurring, I just wanted to make sure that we actually did some research, and we found that we need to address this. Sounds like we do.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Yeah, I would just, I would add, because it's a commercial store, and then they're always there, and they're always on display, it's different than when somebody has a small-scale, safe, healthy breeding operation, and those generally don't have a display commercial store. So they're kind of two different things.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiac?
And this is just, it says here, it's just cats, dogs and cats, so it doesn't, not rodents, not guinea pigs, rabbits, reptiles. Okay.
All right. Okay. If there's no further questions, we will consider an ordinance adding Chapter 6-900, Regulation of Pet Stores, introduced. All right. Thank you for being patient. This was a long meeting tonight. We are up to the open-mic, public comment portion of our meeting. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open mic is not a time for problem-solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. If there are any questions from the council, they will be for clarification only. And if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. So, anybody that would like to address council for open mic, please come forward, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Your Honor and council. My name is Tracy Dillard, and I live in the Sand Creek area at 11551 Juniper Street Northwest. And this is my first time coming to a city council meeting. We've lived, my husband and I have lived here for 18 years, and we just wanted to come and observe. And I just wanted to take you up on the opportunity to comment. I've never done this, so I welcome any, you know, direction or correction for anything. But I just, I've been in touch with Councilmember Carlson and Ray Rower about my concerns with the Northdale Shopping Center. I'm quite saddened to see Jensen's leaving, but my concern is bigger than Jensen's, and I'm not here to represent Jensen's, they can speak for themselves. But I just wanted to point out that for somebody who's lived in the neighborhood for a long time, we've tried to keep good curb appeal at our place. We try to be good neighbors by keeping our house and our yard in good standing. And I'm just concerned at how dilapidated the property is. It's not only deteriorated, but my concern that it is brazenly neglected by whoever owns that property. And in my opinion, that makes them a bad neighbor. It means they don't care about my neighborhood, and I don't think it means they care about the citizens or the city of Coon Rapids. In the 18 years I've lived in my house, I don't remember once ever even seeing anybody outside putting a coat of paint on the property. I know for myself personally, if I was looking to open a business, or I wanted to open an extra business or look for a place, they're not going to get anybody to rent there. So, I heard somebody say recently, complaining is not a solution. So I thought, I have an opportunity. I would imagine it's on the attention of everyone, especially with Jensen's leaving. But I'm troubled that the property, I don't want to say it's been allowed to remain in this condition, but I'm concerned that there's zero effort. And I feel like they're functioning like a slumlord, and I just think that's unfair to those of us who don't want to look like we are indigent and... to those of us who don't wanna look like we are indigent and desperate in our neighborhood, and I don't think it's attracting other new businesses. So, with that said, thank you for your time.
Everybody wanted to argue with her.
Yeah.
You're exactly right. Nodding, yes. Is there anybody else here to speak to, open mic?
Yeah, I've been here before on a couple of these proposals. I'm Rochelle Shackle. I live in the Woodcrest area. I just wanna state, for the record, that they're doing the street assessments this year. Did you guys talk to the college? Because the kids park back there on 101st and alert them of the activity going on, so they don't come up and down the street? Probably not. Anyway, take that to mind, that they park a lot on 101st and come up and down large street. I've talked about that before. I don't see why you're not assessing them, some of the street usage, to do the streets, because they do come up and down that street a lot. Please, do something about 101st. Allow them to park back there. Make it just one-side parking. I think Mark said they're gonna put a sidewalk in. Fruitless. Extend the street, but you probably can't, because it's already done what you're gonna do back there, and make diagonal parking, you know, because when you've got street parking on both sides, and I come walking down the street with my dogs, I got four dogs, I got city permit for that, it makes no room. Okay, so that's one. The main one I'm here for is that top hole, the disc golf course. You really need to get rid of that. You really do. I got some new evidence here, and I was told, I believe by Mark, that, oh, that's the last hole, and that's the grand finale. Okay. But think of the patrons when people are at the park, watching the players, sitting along that fence line. About a month ago, I was walking my dogs. I was by the dugout, by the dugout on the west ball field. It's about 200, 250 feet from the hole. It was like 4:30 in the afternoon, and people on top of the hill yell out, "Four!" And they think that gives them the right. Most of them are good, but they think that gives them the right to go ahead and just throw it. All of a sudden, I heard a thud, looked behind me, oh, there's that disc right behind me. You think they're shooting for that basket? I don't think so. Not that far off. And if they, and here's the other evidence I got. I've called the police a number of times. Back by hole four, when I'm walking my dogs on that path in Woodcrest, they're smoking cigarettes back there, and they're, I smelt marijuana back there, and I carry a little knapsack on the side of me to pick up my dog waste, because I got four dogs. And so I can go through the trash cans and try to recycle, renew, reuse, get some of the aluminum. What I'm seeing in those cans, and have your city workers look, empty beer cans. Not little bottles of alcohol, the big ones. They're out there drinking. And I see them drinking. I've called the cops on that. There's no drinking or smoking in the park. Now they get on the last disc throw there on top of the hill, and they're up there just wailing them out. Police stop them from setting up baskets. You know, when they have the tournaments going out there, it's all listed right here. So that's one. The last one is, I got four dogs. It was nice that you guys went from two pets to three pets, and you don't have to get a permit. And then, a house cats, you don't have to count. Okay, so I'm proposing to do away with sending out surveys. If I have four dogs, you send out surveys to my neighbors. There's somebody on my street that has seven kids, and two adults. I wasn't asked if that's all right. Kids are more dangerous. Kids are getting very violent. They get a hold of their parents' guns. They can do a lot more damage than my dog. And unless there's been a complaint about my dogs, or me mistreating, or running loose, barking, or something, or, why do you send out surveys? I got a house inspection this year to keep that permanent tap. There's somebody on my street that, I think pot is legal now in Minnesota. You can grow it, and you can smoke it in your house. And there's somebody on my street, when I'm walking my dogs, I can smell that stuff. I don't wanna smell that stuff. I got a Class B school bus license, and when I retire, I'm gonna be delivering people's kids to the school. I don't wanna smell that stuff. So, that's mine. I won't bring it up again. You won't see me again here for these minor infractions. At least, please get rid of that hole on top of the hill.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to address council for the open mic? Anybody else here to, yes, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brett Hedberg. I live at 10775 Lynette Street, and I'm the greenhouse guy. I've been messaging you guys. Current standard in Coon Rapids is 10 feet in LDR2 11-603. That's where I live. My backyard, pretty tiny. That would place, if I did a 10-by-10 greenhouse, it would be 10 feet off my fence, 10 feet off the rear fence, making it 20 feet to the leading edge. That's a little excessive. I could park a car in between my fence and the greenhouse. LDR1 is even worse with 15 feet. So, I'm requesting, or hoping you guys will make an amendment to PC 24-4 to include a reduction of a greenhouse setback requirements to five feet, which is consistent with the neighboring cities. Blaine is five feet, and if you have a greenhouse less than 120 feet, it's one foot. Brooklyn Park is five foot, Andover five foot, SLP five foot, Coon Rapids standing out with 10 feet, LDR2 15 feet for LDR1. Yeah, I just want us to be consistent with the rest of the cities in our surrounding area. It is a lot of dead space. So if I was to build a greenhouse, it would just be 300 square feet of my backyard that's wasted. I just don't wanna waste my backyard. I have a dog. She likes to run around. If, you know, my greenhouse is in the middle of the backyard, it would really impede playing fetch, hitting the greenhouse. Yeah, that's pretty much all I got for you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know technically it was on this evening's agenda, but I thought it's kind of a fringe, you know, I thought, I'm gonna let him go. He's here, you know.
Technically, it wasn't on the agenda, because it wasn't part of the ordinance.
Wasn't that part of the 601, or the 201, or the, any of those?
It wasn't a recommended change, so.
No.
No, we mentioned it.
Brad brought that up.
We mentioned it.
Oh, I see.
So, it wasn't technically on the agenda.
I thought because it was part of that whole parcel, that whole ordinance.
I think there's a loophole there.
All right. Very good. We're apparently okay. Well, we were okay anyway, but...
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else here to address council for open mic? You're just here for fun? Wow.
We're always curious.
All right.
Well, I can speak from the back.
There we go.
My name's Megan Helling. Though I live in a neighboring community of Lionel Lakes, I'm here because you guys were considering the introduction of a humane pet store ordinance. And again, I'm, I'm a neighbor right, right across, you know, a few miles. We come to shop in Coon Rapids. We come to eat at your great restaurants in Coon Rapids. So my husband and I do think of this as an extended community. And why that, the ordinance matters to me is my husband and I were impacted by purchasing a dog from a pet store. And honestly, this was in 2004. I didn't realize puppy mills existed. I hadn't heard the term. I grew up in Rome, Minnesota. You know, I, I didn't even know what, we got our dogs from, oh, we have an extra litter, you know, so moved down here, we're like, okay, we're gonna get a dog. We're super excited. We go to a pet store, and shortly after, the dog was very sick. And it had official-looking paperwork, and I thought, how is this possible? Right? I mean, it was just, it was really distressful emotionally and financially, quite frankly, because he was sick his entire life. And that's what got me looking into the paperwork and really researching and understanding. There's dog brokers. I mean, this is big business. I mean, you know, and it's really sad. These brokers hide where the dogs are coming from, and Monty, who is our yellow lab, came from a puppy mill in South Dakota through a dog broker in Iowa, sold in a Minnesota pet store to myself and my husband. You know, we were uneducated consumers. And so not only does this ordinance an animal protection issue, and that, you know, it protects the suffering of the dogs and cats, but it's a consumer protection issue. And I can say that firsthand, because it's, it's tough. Again, emotionally and financially. So, I'm just really excited that you guys introduced this, and I appreciate the support, and really hopeful that next council meeting, this will pass. And in answer to any questions, I'd be happy to leave my information, as I've done a lot of research over the last 20 years on this issue, and I'd be happy to provide any information, whether it's statistics, where the dogs come from, why ethical dog breeders don't sell to pet stores, and, and things of that nature. So, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're gonna close the open-mic portion. Anybody else here for open mic? All right. We're gonna close the open-mic portion, and we are up to other business. And I wanna start out with a piece of bad news. Former mayor, Bill, former mayor William Bill Thompson passed away March 25th, 2024, in Coon Rapids. Bill spent a lifelong career of 48 years in public service, served two, two years in the US Navy in World War II, was a firefighter in Allentown, Pennsylvania for 20 years, was fire chief in Allentown, Pennsylvania for four years, was fire chief in Coon Rapids, Minnesota for 15 years, and ended his career as the mayor of Coon Rapids for seven years. Bill was a member of many community service organizations, Coon Rapids Rotary, Lions, Red Cross, Chamber of Commerce, American Legion, and a member of the VFW. He was a member of many government organizations, International Association of Firefighters, International Association of Fire Chiefs, president of the MSFCA from '87 to '88, vice president of the Great Lakes Division, lobbyist for the Minnesota State Fire Chiefs, board member of the Association of Metropolitan Municipalities, member of the League of Minnesota Cities, chairman of the Legislative Committee for the North Metro Mayors Association, and a board member of the Mercy Hospital Foundation. He received the C.C. Ludwig Award in 1999, presented by the League of Minnesota Cities for distinguished municipal service. And to receive this award, you are nominated by your peers in this occupation. Funeral services will be held Friday, April 12th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Washburn McCreevy Coon Rapids Chapel, with visitation one hour prior. And I just know that Bill Thompson will be missed. He was kind of a fixture around Minnesota, or around Coon Rapids, and we saw him at least once a year at the Rotary Club, and I would see him outside of his house, and he was just a very good guy. So, okay. Any other business?
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak.
A longstanding business in my ward has changed hands, and I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Scott Schulte on a very happy retirement. He has passed that business on to his primary mechanic over there, Sean. And I'm sorry, Sean, I don't remember your last name.
Sean Lawson.
Thank you. I should've remembered that.
He's actually been managing it for quite a while.
Yeah, he's fixed my car many times. Scott has been a longstanding member of this community. His father, Mel, is before him. He has well-earned a amazing retirement, and I just wanna thank you.
Well, he's not retiring. He's still on the county board for...
Well, he's retiring from the garage.
Three more years. I'll quit interrupting now.
No, you won't.
No, I probably won't hear it.
No. But, no, again, thank you, Scott, for all the work that you've done for Coon Rapids, and all the work that you're going to be doing on the county board. I do hope that we still can see you around, and everybody, go see Sean over at the garage on the corner.
All right. Other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griszkowiak.
I just wanted to ask Chief Steiner, with the four new officers that we have tonight, are we up at our, are we at full sworn strength now? Or, we have a little bit of ways. It seems like we've sworn in quite a few in the last several months. We must be getting close.
Well, Councilmember Griszkowiak, no. We're, we're not at full strength. As you might recall, the council has authorized an increase in two since we last swore Officer Tom's again. We've also had a retirement, and then you may have noticed some gaps in the, in the badge numbers up here today. And not everybody completes field training. So, we still have some openings. We do have a couple officers in training right now, and a process open right now. So, we're making slow progress, but one step forward, two steps back sometimes, but we're gonna keep going.
All right. We've got, we've got applications open through Thursday this week, too, I think. Don't wait for new officers?
That's correct, and that's a lateral hiring process. And we have some applicants already that show some promise. We're looking forward to that. And then we have, just like Officer Schmitz was a CSO, we have some people in the pipeline, and we're getting there.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Other business.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll do our, our calendar of events as typical. So, next week, Thursday, the 11th,
we have Kenny &amp; Friends, which is part of the winter concert series. So that is at the Coon Rapids Civic Center. And then, one of the other things that everybody should have gotten in their mail probably about a week or so ago, the recreation guide, which talks about all of the fun things going around in the cities, you know, for the parks and the summer things for the kids to do. So make sure you don't recycle that right away. Read it first. Make sure that you're looking at all the fun things that can happen for the kids in the summer. And then our recycling center, now that it's April, they're in their spring/summer hours. So, that's Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, from 9:00 to 3:00, and Wednesdays from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. So, if you can't make it during the day, Wednesday evenings, they'll be open for all of the great things that you can recycle at the recycling center.
All right.
Do I have anything else on the calendar here?
Mr. Stemwell, anything you would care to add for other business?
Here, council, nothing additional.
Your honor. Councilmember Novak.
Just real quickly, Chief, as a former explorer myself, I just wanted to let you know how great it was to see a former explorer get sworn in today. And if nobody in the community is aware, the police explorer program is for ages, I think, 13 to...
14.
14, excuse me.
It's the starting age for explorers.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Anybody interested in a career in law enforcement, can't recommend it highly enough.
All right. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower, second by Novak, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.